Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, September 27th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a citizen advisory group to the City Council. They are charged with making recommendations concerning land use plans, planning processes, and are on matters of plan implementation. All regular meetings of the Planning and Zoning are quasi-judicial in nature and are recorded for record, retention, and minute transcription. Prior to this meeting, an agenda clarification was meeting, meeting was held at 6 o'clock. The agenda is as follows: We will start with roll call and any disclosures of conflict of interest, ex parte communication, and/or site visit. Aceleen, would you call the roll? And if each commission member would state anything that they need to report, their name, anything they need to report, and what area they represent.
Brennan.
My name is Jack Brennan. I live in the Johnny Creek area. I did make a site visit to Agenda Item Number Three, and I have nothing else to report.
Hargreaves.
My name is Sean Hargreaves. I live in a university neighborhood. I have nothing else to report.
Moore.
My name is Jack Moore. I live in the Old Town, Historic Old Town District, and I own property that is related is about 500 feet from the preliminary plat. And I did do a site visit, and I have nothing else to report.
Sanders.
My name is Julia Sanders. I live in the South Park area. I completed a site visit for Agenda Item Number Three, and I have nothing further to report.
Satterfield.
Ryan Satterfield from the Highland area. I did a site visit on Agenda Item Number Three, and nothing else to report. With that, we will move to Agenda Item Number Two, Approval of Minutes. Commissioners, have you reviewed the minutes? Any comments and/or any motions?
Well, I move that we approve the minutes. Julia brought up this on Page One, under Shane Gremer, on the second line. I think we should strike the word "and" between 93 lots and three. That's the only correction I can see.
Very good. Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
I will second.
Excellent. Moved and seconded. Aceleen, would you call the roll?
Brennan?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Hargreaves?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes. Agenda Item Number Three, Preliminary Plat, Creekside District Subdivision. Scott and Nicole Seibert, Mike and Kathy Seibert, and Mike Seibert with Iron Eagle LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, have submitted a request to subdivide approximately 4.61 acres into seven commercial lots. We will correct that the thing here says residential, but it's actually commercial. Located on Pocatello Creek Road, west of Idahow Elementary, the land is located within a commercial general zoning district. Applicant.
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Mitchell Greer. I'm with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, here at 600 East Oak in Pocatello, representing the applicant on this proposal. Just to give you a general idea of where this property is, I think most people are familiar with the Outback Driving Range. This is a portion of that property located east essentially of the Outback Driving Range. The, I think, long-term plan is ultimately this project, this property will redevelop into more of a commercial-type development consistent with the zoning and the long-term plans of the city. This is one property that we have looked at for probably the last 20 years maybe, for all kinds of different proposals that people have looked at. And I think at this time, the owner has decided to bring the project forward. I think there's some demand for some smaller, commercial-type, doctor's, dentist's, office-type project. And that kind of works as a transition zoning as we move up from the interstate. And I think as you see this thing develop, the commercial uses will get to be more and more intense as we move west on the property. So right now, we're proposing to build kind of a main access into our, into our project. And we'll, we have this designated as Creekside Drive, you can see on the, on the maps. So as part of Creekside Drive, we're proposing to widen Pocatello Creek Road, provide some turn lane capacity in there so that kind of make the traffic in and out of there a little more easy. We have a little bit, it's not a standard turn lane because we have some utility lines that are, that kind of run on the south side of the road. And so we've left kind of an island around one of those, one of those utility poles, and then it functions as, as a turn lane, but it's a little wider than what it would normally be in a, in a standard installation. Those utility poles are going to be extremely difficult to relocate because it's a pretty main transmission line that has a lot of services off of it. So we designed, essentially designed around that. One of the, we just received the staff report here, got cut off on the second page, but one of the items that is a little bit concerning the staff report for us is this Iris Street. We're proposing the main access to this development be at this location on Creekside Drive. Iris is really a secondary street for the development, and the main reason why we want it is because it's going to provide some utility looping capability in the future. And other than that, we don't really see that street as a real long-term part of our development. The way that the coves have changed recently is water lines have to loop if they extend more than 750 feet and some other things. And so that's what Iris Street does for us. And so we show kind of a conceptual layout, and I submitted some of that with, with our application packets. I'm not sure if you guys have that. But essentially, just small doctor's offices through here. And our vision is potentially that Iris could turn and kind of bicycle, bicycle down through the middle of this project, or possibly Iris could extend to the south and then loop through and kind of tie into Creekside Drive. So right now, we're not really sure how that Iris should go through our project. We are comfortable saying that it could extend here. I think in the future, you know, it could end, terminate at this location. Say we got a big user or a single user that wanted to come in and maybe occupy three or four of these lots, then it might change what we would do with Iris. And so we would like to have the flexibility not to extend that to the end of our property. We might even vacate a portion of Iris or request vacation of Iris and then, you know, put a temporary, or put a permanent turnaround in that location. It's really not part of our definite long-term plans. And to give you an idea, just so you understand it, ultimately, there's going to be other accesses off of Pocatello Creek Road as we develop this plan. We're kind of in the preliminary planning stages of potentially bringing Olympus through kind of the mid, mid part of this project, and that Creekside Drive would tie into that. And so, again, I just, we'd like to have that exception to not have to finish Iris. There's, we, we would propose essentially all of these sites could be accessed off of Creekside Drive. We don't, we don't really need it for access. It's, it just, there's no users on the other side of Iris other than the school, and they essentially have playground there. So it's really, again, it's not, it's not critical for this development to have what we call South Iris. So hopefully, you guys will see some wisdom in that proposal. Other than that, I think everything in the staff report is, is pretty standard. And so I think if there's any questions, I'd certainly be available to answer them. If not, we'd just ask that you approve it.
Thank you, Mitch. I do have a question, and apologize that you just received Page Two for that, and understand that we're kind of looking through some of those things right now on the spot. Are you referring to when you're talking about Iris, the, let me see which number? Twenty-one? Okay, yep. So in twenty-one, I guess the way that I read that is just that the water main needs to be extended and not necessarily the full street?
Well, then I think it says, I don't know.
Twenty-five?
Yeah, I think it was in twenty-five. Yeah, I saw it, twenty-five. The public improvements need to come all the way through Iris.
Gotcha.
And so, you know, we, we intend to loop that water line at some point, whether it comes through the center of our project, or again, continues south and loops around. We've terminated or intend to terminate it at the end of that Iris Street in a fire hydrant as a temporary measure, and then as this project develops in the future, we'll, we'll loop that thing through in our next phases, however we, however it actually develops.
And so with the way the plat is set up, Lot Seven has access off of Creekside through the easement that is set up through the middle there.
Yeah, so we're proposing an easement.
Okay.
That would be a shared access, utility easement to access those two, both of those lots, yeah.
Very good. Any, any questions for Mitch?
I have a question, which is Iris actually required. Couldn't you just loop the water line anyway, not put that street?
Potentially. I mean, I, I think it could, maybe we could just loop the water line through there and not build Iris at all. I think, I don't know. It's, it's a right-of-way, it's a city, it's already a dedicated right-of-way. It's already a dedicated street, so that's maybe a question that is for someone else, you know, other than myself. So it may not be.
But it, it could be a forward street since it's a dedicated street already?
It is a dedicated right-of-way. One thing that we need to note is as we get further south in Iris, when we did the engineering for the widening of Pocatello Creek Road, because this right-of-way wasn't used, we, we ran some storm water, some of our storm system down Iris Street, and there's actually a kind of a detention pond at the south end of Iris. So it's never going to go all the way through or do anything without kind of reconfiguring all that stuff. And our long-term plans are for Iris to deviate away from that pond in the future if it does continue south.
Did you consider putting Creekside Drive where Iris is? And the reason I'm asking that is it gets you a little further away from the stop sign that goes up Olympus, and you're going to have a little better traffic flow, in my opinion.
So we, we did. One of the things is this, you know, this street right here creates kind of a separation from what we believe is going to be kind of two different uses on this property, more of an office-style development here, and then as we move west, it'll be commercial. Right now, we're, you know, from the Olympus Drive intersection, we're almost 1,000 feet away from Olympus with that Creekside Drive. The reason why we don't really like Iris, the main reason, is it's offset from North Iris here. So there's a, this creates not a great intersection. And so we want to move our traffic away from that location. That's, you know, it's okay for a secondary access. We don't really want that to be our primary access into the development so that we can avoid those conflicting traffic movements. There's also a lot of school and bus traffic that comes in here, and we think maybe long-term that might make sense to have an access off of Iris for the school rather than this access for the school. And so that's why we showed that approach there. It probably cleans that up a little bit. So we did consider it, and we did have some iterations where Iris was a little more primary, but as we thought about it, it became less, less desirable, I think.
Other questions?
So speaking of the school traffic, are there children that walk those roads on the way home, or do they walk on Pocatello Creek at all?
I think there is some pedestrian traffic that comes from the neighborhood to the north primarily into the school. We did some pretty extensive studies on traffic, on pedestrian traffic when we widened Pocatello Creek Road, and that's been 15 years ago, so I'm sure they're not that, I'm sure they're not that great anymore. But this essentially is the, is the pedestrian feature associated with the school crossing that was placed as part of that widening project. We're planning, obviously, it's a little, it's, we have a, you know, we have this, we see this being kind of a busy or a busier intersection. And so we have a similar, a similar setup as they have here. So you can cross halfway, and you're kind of protected by a, you know, an island, a pedestrian island in the middle of the road. And we have a similar thing where you can cross and be protected in that, in that island. So that serves as a dual purpose. So there will be pedestrian crossing and pedestrian traffic in this location, and we preserve that with kind of that island approach that we used on Pocatello Creek Road. I don't think there is a lot of pedestrian traffic that comes on the south side.
That pond down?
Yeah, on that south side. And I'm not, I'm not totally familiar with the school district boundaries anymore in this area, but in the past, that wasn't a real, a real concern, I think.
Okay.
Comment on that? Oh, I grew up in the neighborhood, and there were houses on the south side for a long time, but there's all the kids that have grown up on that side. Everybody's grown up. There is hardly any children that actually live on the south side that would go to Idahow. So pretty much all the pedestrians are on the north side.
So you can see, you know, those houses still exist, and obviously, those are going to be removed as this project develops, and there won't be, long-term, I don't think you'll see any residential uses on the south side.
Mitch, did you see Item Thirty-Two?
Yes, and we're not intending on having any access on those lots off of Pocatello Creek Road. It conflicts with, okay, I should say, long-term. Okay, as we, as we develop our project, while the houses are still there, we're not planning on really changing how that is. So the houses would remain unchanged until those lots develop, and then we wouldn't have access off Pocatello Creek Road. So that, that's the intent of how that would go. We're intending our primary access to be off of Creekside Drive, and, and then, you know, potentially some secondary access off of Iris, but nothing off of Pocatello Creek other than our main road.
Okay.
East, I should say, east of Creekside Drive.
Yeah, I just wondered if that was going to be a deal breaker, but I, if you hadn't seen it, so I don't know.
No, we, we have this set up to access off of Creekside Drive. And, you know, like I said, long-term, we, we have kind of developed some preliminary planning concepts for this site, and long-term, you know, we're planning on having a couple more accesses as we go through. They'd be shared kind of accesses and things like that. But for right now, this will be our primary access to this area.
So let me make sure I understand on that, too. I believe the city's intent is that if you do take it to final plat stage and then build Creekside, at that point, that curb and gutter and everything would be replaced where those current home accesses are? Are you saying that your intent would be more to just keep it residential until the homes are no longer used as residential?
Yeah, and I think honestly, this, this, this lot is going to maintain a residence there for the foreseeable future.
Okay.
So this, this parcel where Mr. Seibert's son lives is going to remain a residence for probably until much of this project develops.
And it accesses only off of Pocatello Creek, or would you eliminate the access on Pocatello Creek and bring it off of Iris at that point?
Our intent wasn't to, to change that, but I, you know, again, I, I can't necessarily speak for, for Mr. Seibert. And this existing access kind of shares this other driveway, and there's, there's an existing home here that was not going to be removed for a period of time.
Right.
You know, it, until, until there's a user there, they want to maintain or rent or whatever in that home, and not put a lot of, not make a lot of changes to how it is, that's what I think. But I think we understand and would.
Eventually.
Once, once those change, we'll change the access. That's, that's what we'd like to see happen.
Okay. Any more questions for Mitch? Okay, thank you, Mitch. Matt, if we could hear from you?
Good evening, Mr. Chair of Commission Members. Matthew Lewis, Planning Division Manager with the city. Don't have a whole lot to add. I'll just speak on behalf of the land use end of it, and then if you have questions with regards to Iris or anything like that, I'll have Merrill address those for you. As noted, the property in its entirety is owned commercial general. There are seven lots of being proposed, all the same square footage of 21,780 square feet. There's not a minimum lot size that's required for commercial. Typically, the uses are going to be dependent as far as the size of the building and so forth, on how much off-street parking is required for whatever uses there. And so, it's not to say that you, that, you know, an office building may take up two of those lots instead of just the one. I mean, that's always a possibility, but the size of the buildings are typically dictated by that off-street parking and then your, your interior landscaping setbacks, that kind of stuff. You mentioned the R restriction on the two lots, Lot One and Lot Two. The intent of that was that when those lots are developed, that those accesses would be eliminated, and that the approaches would only come off of Creekside, or off of Iris for the 1785. Other than that, I don't have really anything else to add. Staff does recommend approval with the conditions that are outlined mainly in Exhibit One. And again, if you have questions, Merrill can address those for you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Matt or Merrill?
I have a couple of questions.
Merrill Coyle, Public Works Development Engineer for the city of Pocatello.
Merrill, Item Twenty-Two, on Page Two of Two.
Yes.
Existing water services to 1755 and 1785 will need to be relocated?
Those are from the Water Department. Any chance we can get to relocate services off of an arterial to a side street? We try to do that. And looking at this and listening to more of the plan tonight, I would like to see if you would recommend giving some flexibility on a few of these items, and then dictate which ones they are, which ones I think they are. This one, for instance, is maybe what should happen is that water services to both of these lots would be stuffed off of the, what is it, Creekside Drive, so that they're already there and they're potentially to there until, unless something happens. So if, if the water line does go out in Pocatello Creek, that they can just dig a point source, shut the corp stop off, and relocate those services at that time. So I might recommend something to that, so they're not done immediately right now, but we have a plan for the future for those two to remove them out. The other ones, if I may, I'm sure along with that lines is Twenty-One, Twenty-Five, both dealing with right-of-way improvements and an extension, that recommend that staff be able to, to look at those and to work with the developer to come up with either council gives a recommendation or a waiver or something to the ordinance. The reason that they're there is because the ordinance requires them, and staff is obligated to follow what the ordinance is. So maybe there's some flexibility with what we've heard now, so that we could come up with some language or timing or so forth that could be presented to council that would give some of that flexibility at that time so that we could address some more of those issues. Also, if, when we're looking at some, some of the plans with Thirty-Two, maybe there's some flexibility there that all has to do with timing. Not quite sure what the note would look like and the requirement on the plat, because once we put the R restriction on, there's not supposed to be any access. But if they're supposed, it's a timing issue, that we could work and have some flexibility to come up with something there that, once the properties are sold, for instance, and being constructed on for a business or office, that at that time, those accesses will be removed, once they're removed from a residential use.
Very good. Thank you, Ma'am. Any?
Is, is there any reason that those can't be just left commercial general?
The lots?
Yeah.
Well, they will be, they will be used, left as commercial general, but once the residence moves, and it's not, the home isn't being used as a residence, and it moves to a business, that's when that, it's going to increase the traffic considerably. At that time, those approaches really need to be eliminated and planned where Mitch, Rocky Mountain Engineering, and developers plan for those accesses to be.
Well, I, the way I read Thirty-Two, lots one and two, which is the two lots where the houses are.
Right.
Shall have an R restriction placed on them.
So the restriction's for access, not for zoning?
I know, but then if they go to, if they go back to commercial general, the access is restricted anyway, isn't it?
No.
Does it?
Nope, it's not. And that's what we're trying to do. Once it goes to that heavier use, we'd like those, those lots restricted and the access off of the side streets.
Any other questions for Merrill? Okay, thank you, Ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Commission. Any discussion? Thoughts on the project?
So as Merrill was just explaining about Twenty-One, Twenty-Five, especially Thirty-Two, I think maybe it would be nice to have a little bit more information from the developers about what their timeline might be, because I wouldn't want to place an arbitrary timeline of, you know, this is when that R restriction needs to go into effect, but I don't want it to just linger on either.
Yeah. You know, I think on a lot of these things, and I appreciate the staff with their flexibility in that, in offering that out. My experience has been is that between staff and the developer, they usually are able to work through these things, you know, barring any recommendation that we would give otherwise. I guess I'm fairly comfortable leaving that up to them to work through and not necessarily putting any timelines or, or anything on it, but just leaving it open that they would be able to work that through. And then in the end, when it gets to the council, it will be more defined, and I think at that point, they would be able to have those notes in. at that point, they would be able to have those notes in the plat that would give the full picture, and then the council, in the end, is going to make that final decision.
Okay.
Those are my thoughts on it. Overall, I think it is a good project. I think a lot of thought has gone into it, and I know that it's been looked at for many years, and so, it's neat to see it moving forward. Other comments?
I have one. I think it's a great project, something I think this area has needed for a long time. It's kind of sat there. So, I think it's a great project. I'm just trying to figure out how to address some of these concerns. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a preliminary plat, so when it comes back for final plat, can we address those concerns at that time?
The city council. It goes final plat to the city council, and so, the city council would then make the decision and deal with it at that point. Are there concerns in particular?
No, I just don't want the concerns to keep the project from going ahead. That's my, that's my point. And I'm just sitting here thinking, who's going to make the motion, and what kind of verbiage is going to go into that? Well, does anybody have?
Go ahead, Jack. You can do it.
Well, I move that we accept the preliminary plat as presented, including the staff recommendations in Exhibit 1, with the note on items 21, 22, and 25, that...
And 32?
And 32, that there be more discussions between the city and the developers to resolve those items.
Very good. We have a motion? Are we good? It's been motioned? Any discussion on the motion? If not, Aislinn, will you call the vote?
Can I read this through to make sure I have what you wanted?
Yes.
To recommend approval of city council, city subdivision for the acres and rural locations per staff recommendations, with exceptions to Exhibit 1, numbers 21, 22, 25, and 32, that more discussions between the city staff and developers be finalized before the final plat is approved, or?
Yeah, that's good news.
Will be discussed, is that?
Be discussed and possibly resolved.
All right. Brennan?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
The motion carries, and that will conclude our meeting for the evening. We're adjourned.